According to my watch, it's 7 o'clock so we can open our zoning board meeting. And I need to first ask if anybody here is making an audio recording. Sir? Audio recording? No, okay. For the record, I have an audio recorder. Kathy has an audio recorder. Lake Ham is making a video recording. We have on our agenda tonight two petition hearings and then a follow-up discussion on some proposed zoning bylaw changes. Now, before we get into our two hearings, one is the Aruda hearing first, the second is the Anchor Sign Hearing, and I think it's for a Dollar Tree sign, the Dollar Tree store down on 105. I want to point out that we only have four members present, and I'll again repeat this when we get into the hearings. We only have four members present. We normally have five. And that means that any votes taken will require, any votes pertaining to petitions will require a unanimous approval or unanimous denial because we have to have a supermajority on our votes. So normally, we'd need at least four out of five. But we only have four members, so we'd require four votes. So it's 7:02, I think we'll open the Aruda Hearing. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Master General Laws, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 18th at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street upon the petition of Tracy Aruda, a special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to raise a pre-existing non-conforming residence and construct a new single-family residence on a pre-existing non-conforming lot within the site. Setback is provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 13 Cottage Lane. And who is here for Aruda's? If you'd please move to the podium so we can hear you and record you. I appreciate it.
This is my son, Brandon.
Aye. Do a call.
So the last time I met with the board, I originally was planning on keeping the existing foundation that's there and just adding up. But after talking to several contractors, they explained to me it's in my best interest if I demo the foundation. So I'm looking to get a special permit to raise and rebuild a single-family home.
Okay, we have the plans. Before we go any further, you heard me a moment ago when I said we only have four members. I want to confirm that you would like to take the chance to go ahead with only four members tonight.
Mm-hmm.
The alternative for you is to request a continuance. We can go ahead a month when I'm, I think people are on vacation is the problem. We can move ahead to their, our next month's hearing if you'd like to.
That's okay.
You want to take a chance?
Yes.
Okay. So your interest is in essentially taking down the old house and building a new house?
That's correct.
With a garage?
Correct.
And?
Keeping the same footprint.
Same. Does the old house have a garage?
No. So that's why I had saw, I saw the board before was to get a special permit to build the garage, and it was approved.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I have it here.
Yeah, it was a couple hours ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it was in the winter. It's very cold out.
Are you keeping the garage?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna keep the garage?
Yes, I'm gonna still build the garage. I'm just looking to, there's a block foundation there now. I'm looking to raise that.
So they're saying the CMU block foundation is not adequate for the two-and-a-half story, or three stories that you're gonna add to it?
Correct.
All right. Eight-inch block, you can't grow it and stiffen it up. It's just easier to just take it out and go up. Is that what?
I've been told by several contractors, yes.
All right. One of the things that always concerns us on small lots, and this, I think, is a fairly small lot, is the coverage, and we do have it here. So the existing coverage is 46 percent, and the proposed is going up to 52. Is this the property we talked about, the drainage back into the?
Yeah, the swale on the side.
Coming back to me. Coming back to me.
Good man.
One of the things that stands out that I think is useful to recognize is on your plot plan, you show an existing shed at the very, it looks like it's at the waterfront.
That's the boathouse.
Perfect. Ask how you could have a shed in the water. Light dawns on Marblehead. So on your plan, you show a side setback of, it looks like 15.9 or 16.1 feet, which is within the 20-foot. But you, the shed is only 4.7 feet from the side, according to this plan, the boathouse. Which sort of, on that one property line establishes a different setback requirement. So you meet, it looks like you meet the requirement on that side. And then we have the 30.6 feet to Cottage Lane for the garage. We approve that?
That's correct.
Now, I know I asked a question, but I missed the answer. Did you say you'd built the garage already?
No.
Aside from the garage, the proposed house would have the same size footprint as the one you're gonna tear down?
That is correct.
Are you, are you in the flood zone? Is this house in the flood zone? Do you know that?
I'm not, no.
Being that close to the water?
I did not need flood insurance.
You don't need flood insurance?
No.
That's good news. That's a nightmare.
It only floods at high tide.
Okay.
You have lot slopes, right? It goes down to the water?
It does, yes.
So you're up?
I'm up high, yeah.
Yeah, that's elevation max. 95, 85.
This is a three-story, well, it's really two stories with the, I assume you're gonna have a finished basement?
It's a finished basement, two stories.
Semi-finished.
Are you gonna meet the height limitations of the town bylaws?
Yes.
Even in the back?
Yes. I've talked to Nate.
Okay.
He's seen the plans.
I'm sure Nate would check all those things.
And then the six-foot setback to the septic, is that gonna be a problem?
That was, that was approved last night.
That was approved last night?
Correct.
So as long as you have that barrier in?
Correct.
And you're gonna keep the same footprint?
We have, we do have a few letters here. We have a letter from the Conservation Commission dated July 15th. "I've inspected the referenced property and reviewed the construction plans. Due to the extensive activity in the buffer zone, a notice of intent will be required." So you have business to conduct with the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
"The planning board sat at their Thursday, June 27th meeting. The planning board reviewed the above property. The board has no comments regarding this petition." And we have a memo dated today from the Board of Health. "After reviewing the petition for hearing at 13 Cottage Lane, it was determined by the Board of Health to allow the setback of six feet instead of the required 10 feet to a septic tank, to a, to a septic tank to a foundation. A poly-barrier liner must be added at the time of construction, please. Note, the system for the above-mentioned address is designed for two bedrooms with no increase in flow." Any thoughts or comments from board members on this?
I don't see any thought at all.
Chris?
Yeah, just staying within the existing setbacks and the same footprint, I don't see an issue with it at all.
Anybody present wish to comment for or against? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Les Dakin, and I own the property at 15 Cottage Lane, which abuts directly north of the Aruda property. We have no issue with the home Ms. Aruda wants to build with one proviso. And I believe I mentioned this at the December 20th hearing. So if I'm repeating myself, I apologize to members of the board. This proposal will move approximately 619 square feet of watershed and replace it with concrete and structures. So as you know, what used to absorb the rainfall will now be displaced. The water has to go somewhere. For example, one inch of rain will deposit .6 gallons over every square foot of land. If you combine this to the displacement by the garage, which was approved earlier, if we get a one-inch of rainfall on this property, it will displace 684 gallons, almost 700 gallons of water, that used to be absorbed by the watershed that now needs to go somewhere else. So we, we have a concern about flooding on our property. We feel compelled to protect our investment from this water runoff and seek your mitigation efforts to eliminate flooding through our property. We think that, or we feel, we respectfully request that the same order of conditions stated on the special permit for the garage be inserted on this special permit, i.e. reasonable conditions modifications, and inserted into the permanent record. And we have no issue with Ms. Aruda. If she's willing to do this, if it's stated in the record, we have no issue. We would like to see her build her home.
So I believe we, we talked about drain leads going into a dry well and a swale being put between the properties, and that you were fine with that the last time? Would you be fine with that this time?
If, if it's worded the same way?
Yeah, I believe that's what we talked about.
Said, planned, stamped by an engineer will be approved by the building commissioner and will show there will be no additional runoff to the property located at 15 Cottage Lane.
That's how the decision was fit. That's how we wrote the decision.
If that's amenable to the board, then we're okay.
That was, that was totally acceptable to you, and it was acceptable to you at the time that we did the permit for the garage back in December, was it? January, I think?
Yeah, all roof drains will be going in the Coltec 100 stone chambers. So it'll all be down at the bottom, no bottom runoff, no barriers, no runoff from the side.
Towards the lake, not towards the street?
Towards the lake, not towards the street.
It, it makes sense, you're, you're right on the, on the lake. It would make sense that some kind of a swale or something to divert any runoff to the lake would, and to protect, to protect your neighbor's property would be essential.
Correct. There was gonna be, we agreed on one foot by two-foot stone trench that was gonna go down between the, between the property line.
I, I wasn't privy to the details.
On the site plan, what they do, the site plan, we're gonna have that all.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen the site plan. But if it's approved by an engineer to prevent any runoff to our property, we're okay. We'd like to see Ms. Aruda.
We'll use the same language in the restrictions, plus any other comments that board members might make that we used before. Did it work for you then? It work for them? It seemed to be a reasonable solution to a difficult problem. These, these lots are small.
Yes.
And we, we understand that. We are always concerned about penetration of the rainwater, absorption of the rainwater into the, into the ground. Where we're 30 feet, 50 feet away from the lake, it's a little bit less of a concern because it can run into the lake, but we always want to recharge the aquifers also.
Yeah, as, as a matter of fact, it's gonna end up in the lake anyway, one way or another. But if we can move it along so it doesn't flood the property, usable properties we have, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Would somebody care to make a motion one way or the other on this petition, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the petition as submitted with the caveat that we have the swale and the drain leads approved by the building commissioner, same wording as that.
So we use the same wording in the restrictions that we had before?
Sure.
You're happy with that? You're happy with that? So we have a motion made with restrictions to approve the petition?
Yes, I see that.
And Joe has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion from the board? Are you done? All in favor, please?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. So you have unanimous approval. Thank you. And you know the, you've been through this, you know the route. Don't explain it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have luck. Next on our agenda is the Anchor Sign Petition. "The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Master General Laws, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 18th at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street upon the petition of Anchor Sign, Inc. A special permit under 6.6.3.4 is requested for a sign consisting of 105.86 square feet under 6.6.3.2 for a wall signage, which is 23 feet 2 inches from grade, and under 6.6.3.6 for a sign that is 54 inches tall by 84 inches wide, as provided by, provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 56 Main Street and is owned by Bruce A. Benoit and Matthew P. Falconeri." And who is here to present for this?
Hi, I'm Anna Halleck, the representative for Dollar Tree. We are looking, there's a few regulations we're going against. To start off is for the wall sign. We're seeking relief for the sign regulation where the, no sign exceeds more than 32 square feet. Dollar Tree is asking to increase the amount to 105.86 square feet. That's the general size of the signs. For these stores, they generally manufacture the channel letters, which these are, in large amounts. That way, when the sign permits all set, rather than starting manufacturing, we're able to ship it out to the installers and install the sign. It also helps them cut down costs when they do bulk orders at the same size. So it wasn't just a random size, it was more the standard sizing for majority of the Dollar Trees that are around.
You're, you're speaking now of the facade?
The facade one, yep.
Okay.
So that's the general size of majority of Dollar Trees that are around this area, more of like the Massachusetts. We have a couple warehouses where they manufacture these signs in bulk orders, which is why they requested this size. Another thing is the logo, the circular logo that's above it is only 42 inches, but that also increases the square footage since it's the overall height and overall length. So when you do include the height and the width of that, you get the 105.86 square feet, which is of course over the 32 square feet. So that's one of the regulations they're looking to seek relief from. Also, on the wall sign, you, the sign regulations have a maximum height of 20 feet from grade. The current proposal signage is 23 feet and 2 inches, which exceeds that height restriction. So they're seeking relief for those two regulations for the wall sign. If you want, I can go on to the freestanding sign, or if you want to talk about the wall sign, I can leave that up to you.
First, I have to say that I'm a big fan of Dollar Tree. I like the store.
Me too.
That doesn't color my perception of this request. With regard, in my opinion, and I'm speaking strictly for myself, the board members can speak up in a minute, we faced this exact, are you from the area here?
Rainham, so, kind of.
Okay, so we faced this dilemma several times. We faced it with Walgreens, we faced it with CVS, we faced it with the Urgent Care Health Place, we faced it with the bank down the street, all of these less than a mile away. And when they came in asking for essentially the same thing, they all agreed to a smaller sign. And if you drive down the street and look at the Walgreens sign, it's tiny on the facade. And I don't think they've lost any customers. Likewise, CVS, likewise, the bank, likewise, Urgent Care, and so a lot of stores. So this issue that you guys need this enormous sign, bright green sign, where smaller signs clearly do the job, personally, I think that's a false argument.
I do know we did, the designer did a quick rendering of just what the 32 square feet would look like, and because it's such a large facade?
Do we have it here?
I don't know if you guys have that rendering. I think they deleted.
Do you have it?
Oh, I might have it. Here we go. So I do have this one, this is our last option. They have, it's just under 30 square feet.
It shows what the?
In a few one, I can just bring that up to you.
It shows what the sign would look like on the facade?
If it was within?
I can read it. I can read it from here?
They thought it just looked?
He can read it all the way over here.
They looked a bit small on that facade, which is why they wanted to come to get relief.
So again, now, I know that Anchor is in South Carolina, so they can use Google Street View, but use Google Street View and can take a virtual ride down Main Street as you can do going home?
Yep.
And look at Walgreens on the right, or CVS on the left, and it looks kind of like that, if maybe even a little smaller.
Okay.
And again, I don't think anyone's missed those stores. That's my take on it.
I know with that, we have in the past given special permits for a lot of the signs on Main Street for different reasons, maybe larger, maybe more.
We have.
And I think you missed the Seasons sign as well. The Seasons, that is near there. So I mean, I don't think we need a huge sign for our Dollar Tree, but I also think we should be reasonable.
This is 100 feet from the town line, right?
It's near them.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. It's near them. And we gave a, a special permit for the, the sign for the gas station.
Oh, you know, before we go any further, I need to, to double-check with you. You heard my comment at the beginning of the meeting?
Unanimous.
We only have four of our five members.
Yep.
So I want to make sure that you're comfortable with us continuing with this tonight, or would you like to postpone until next month?
We can continue tonight.
You're, you're willing to take the risk with four out of five?
That's fine. I do have a few more options, too, 'cause that is what Dollar Tree wants. I'm actually the sign installer, and I know we do signs and I do permits all the time. That's what the customer wants, and then that's what the town wants, is the smaller one. So I do know there could be a happy medium, because if you just approved every sign that they requested, you'd have giant signs that, no, it's unnecessary.
What option are you suggesting?
They have a happy medium, where it is, let me see. I believe, it's actually two. Do you want both? I can give you both, just more options. So they kind of increase the size as they go, but this one's kind of the 40 square feet, and then this one's 60, so it doubles it. Just to see if they can get a little bit more than the 32 square feet, there's a lot better than that.
That's 30, and that's, you said that's, excuse me, 40 square feet, and that's 60?
Yep, and then 60, yeah. So it adds a little bit more, but it's still over the?
Okay, so, so based, based on these options of, these alternatives of 40 and 60, are these stock sizes that your sign company makes?
We make them. They are in, like, the bulk order ones, so we would have to custom make that size. They're not ready-made.
Small, medium, large.
I think the only ones that are really ready-made in this area for our manufacturing plan is the one that we presented in the beginning. Everything else would just be custom.
So here's the three different sizes. Small, town-size, medium, and then the large that they proposed in their application. I think the medium has a good scale to it. I think the large is too, the original application is too large.
Can you see it, Joe?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking Joe if he can see it.
He's seen them.
He's seen them, okay.
My question is, which rendering is closest to what we have up there, or it's, or right now? I know Walgreens is a little bit, is on the small side, but CVS is a little larger.
Yes.
And?
And Seasons is bigger, yeah.
And Seasons is much.
And Seasons is out of control.
Yeah.
You know, it, if we could come up with something that still works, works there, without being at, you know?
That whole area is zoned business, and the town seems to be targeting that to bring in business in that area. I know people think there's houses across the street from it, but it's also zoned business. It's being used as residential, so that's a consideration. And even Woods Edge area is zoned business. I know you're a 40B, and you're probably behind the Dollar Store, maybe? Woods Edge? Yeah. That is also zoned business. So I think it's, it's reasonable to expect that, you know, a business, whether we like the store or not, we, we expect a business to go in that area. So I think I'd be okay with compromising something. I don't know what we'd want to agree upon, but?
Well, one thing we could compromise on is the height above grade of the sign. This is supposed to be, I think the plan is for this to be approximately 23 feet above grade.
I believe if we go with the, like, say it was the 40 or 60 square foot, which is just the letters, and then we don't have the logo anymore, we could move that down a little bit, and then we'll be right at that 20.
Well, you're, you're, you're an independent company that makes signs. Will you be making the logo also?
No, not if we go with just the, the letters, so on those plans.
But if you went, if you, if they went with a full-size sign, would you be involved, or would it come from elsewhere?
Nope, it would be, oh, wait, with the full-size sign?
Yeah.
Like what we originally walked in and asking? That one would be shipped to us. Anything else?
Including the logo?
Yeah, 'cause it's already made. It's just sitting in a warehouse, waiting to be shipped.
If you decide to go, if, if we collectively decide to go with a smaller sign, you'd make it?
Yep.
Would you, would you also make a smaller logo?
They don't want the logo. If they go smaller in square footage, they just want Dollar Tree. They don't even want to add the logo.
I'm, if I were the one voting here, and I'm only one of four, I'd push for the 40-square-foot sign. That's me.
Is that the middle of the rule?
I think the 40 is this one, and this is?
It's the smallest.
Yeah. No, the other thing is considered what's fair trade to the other businesses there, too. You notice that? You know, getting too big a sign, and, you know, kind of if we could keep it on the same level as the rest of them for fair trade, you know?
Well, we have to remember what our bylaw is, and we didn't define the bylaw. It came from, actually, it came from town meeting, where it was approved. So the town folks are the ones who said, "Small signs." And we've, I think, stuck with that fairly well with, with some, some flexibility. My personal preference would be with the 40-square-foot. And I think, what was the height above grade if it's 40? You said you had that number?
That, it might be on the plans, if I can just. That, it might be on the plans, if I can just--
It's that one there, I think.
Right here, 40. So, top side would be 19 feet and 4 and 1/2 inches.
So, if we went with a 40, you'd come much closer to the bylaw on the size, and you would meet the requirement on grade?
Yes.
Okay. That's where I am.
I--
Public comment?
Yeah.
We'll get there.
We still got one more sign, too.
Oh, I know. Pedestal sign, yeah, yeah.
I would be agreeable to either one of these. Definitely, it's a compromise on either one of them.
I guarantee you, nobody will miss the Dollar Tree store.
No, but you know--
You don't even need a sign.
Yeah, but because it's a Dollar Tree store, do we want to just say we're going to not give them the same privileges?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I mean--
They want a big, they're going to want a big sign, so everybody knows it's a Dollar Tree.
Yeah, well, everybody wants a big sign. Everybody wants a big sign.
Everybody wants a big sign, right.
So, and we have in the past given some leeway. I wouldn't object to this one, but I would also think that your suggestion would be great, if that's what they will do for us.
So, what I suggest is, we're going to get in a moment to the third request, which was the freestanding pedestal sign.
Correct, yep.
And if, I would say that if they'd be willing to go with the smaller facade sign, the front service mount sign, that we could look a little more, with a little more flexibility at the pedestal sign.
Okay.
And once we discuss it, then we can ask for the permit. So, talk to us about the other sign. And by the way, will it only be two signs at this?
Yeah, for that freestanding, does that second--
Well, there's going to be the storefront, the facade sign.
The storefront, and then to the left of that, there's actually, I believe, a restaurant.
But that's their business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They did leave room, though, at the freestanding sign. So, at the bottom of that sign, you can see that it's blank, it's just white. That would be shared with whichever restaurant or retail store does go in there. So, it wouldn't just be for the Dollar Tree.
So, the relative, the relevant, excuse me, the relevant bylaw that addresses this one is--
It was, "Shall product no more than 2 feet horizontally from the means of support."
So, that's 6.6, 3.5, 1. Horizontal, no more than 2 feet. 20 feet from the ground. So, you, on the pedestal sign, you'd meet the height requirement.
Yes.
But--
It's the width, so overall, you would allow four.
But instead of a 24-inch overhang, you basically want a 42-inch overhang.
Yep. This is mainly because, again, when we were designing this, these don't come manufactured. This is all custom. But when we were designing the Dollar Tree, as you can see in this one, the letters are only 7 inches in height, with that width. If you bring it down to where the bylaws were, I think the letters were closer to, it was less than 6 inches, which is why we were asking for this relief.
Is this a lighted sign?
This is. This is internally illuminated.
Internally lighted, LEDs, I'm sure.
Yep.
And will it be on a timer to go off at a certain time?
Yeah, the timer is either store hours, or if you guys have the bylaws.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the hours are, but it's when it's open, the lights are on. When the store is closed, the lights will be off.
Joe, comments on the pedestal sign?
Does it meet the, I wasn't listening, I'm sorry. Does it meet the setbacks from the street, the right-of-way? Does it, is it, how far back is it?
I'm unsure of how far back. I know, I believe we requested a site plan that we'll have to give to the building inspector. It does meet that requirement. We are within the setback.
You're not asking for a waiver of that, of the setback, so--
No, but it is within the setback, yeah.
I'm assuming you'll meet the bylaw. I'm assuming you'll meet the bylaw, because you're not asking for a waiver.
Exactly, yep.
Well, again, I'm looking at the other buildings down through there that have the, you know, the other signage. Every one of them has been a low-profile sign. You look at Walgreens, it's not much more than it's the shrubbery. You look at the CVS the same way, same with the real estate outfit and so forth. And Bridgewater, Sanes Bank, it's, they're all low signs. They're not massive signs that are sticking up in the air.
Well, hang on for a second. Peter Panatieri's Plaza has a pretty big sign.
Right. I agree with you there.
And that's almost next door. I think it is next door.
Yeah.
And we've waived a number of the requirements on those signs out front that announce the stores, so that patrons can know what stores are in there.
Mm-hmm. But you're going to have a restaurant or some other fast food to the left of that?
Yeah, so I believe the space to left is, it was labeled like restaurant or retail, I believe. I'm not sure which one. I'm not for sure. But that's what that blank space underneath is for, so that they wouldn't need another freestanding sign.
And their signage would go on that sign below--
Correct.
In the white area?
Split 50/50, little stand panels. So, Dollar Tree would have 50% up top, and then whatever retail or restaurant goes below, their logo would take up 50%.
It wouldn't be hanging below, coming down the column.
We do have a couple of comments from other boards I'd just like to read into the record. We have a July 9 memo from the Board of Health that says, "After reviewing the petition for hearing at 56 Main Street, the Board of Health has no issue with the petition." We have a July 15 memo from the CONCON, Conservation Commission. "There are no wetland issues associated with this part of the property. The commission has no opinion on the project." We have a little bit more from the Planning Board, dated July 16. At their Thursday, July 11 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above petition for hearing from the Appeals Board in regards to the design. The Planning Board had originally been told, "This is how this particular company does it. However, after research was done by the Board, was able to see that this company has designed stores in other ways." So, the Planning Board has done a little bit of research, apparently. Therefore, the Planning Board recommends the zoning board look online to see how many other types of signs, designs might be available. Attached are two examples of what appears to be a smaller sign than what is requested, but they also comment that they don't know the dimensions. And I have pictures you're welcome to look at, but--
I believe I saw, those are the ones, like I said, we have that manufacturing plant that has the average size. Everything else, we would just make custom. They do have ones, I think it was the double stacked, yeah. So, those are just custom signs that any sign company can manufacture.
And this does not have the logo?
Nope, no logo.
But there's no dimensions on these, so we can't really, it's qualitative, not quantitative.
I think when they went to the planning board, they were trying to say that the signs were already made, and this was the square footage that they make. In reality, if you guys just don't approve that, you would just have to make a custom. They just didn't want to spend more money.
We also have some written documentation from, I believe, a butters or neighbors. We have one from Doreen McLeod. Doreen McLeod here? Ms. McLeod? Ms. McLeod called the office Thursday afternoon. She was unable to attend the meeting, I should have read this. "But asked that her thoughts about the petition be added to the record. These are as follows. First, Ms. McLeod is not in favor of the petition. Feels the applicant should abide by the Lakeville bylaws. Second, Ms. McLeod feels it is important that businesses be welcomed into Lakeville. Third, this sign, however, does not reflect the character of the town. Fourth, the sign of this size is not necessary, as residents will be able to identify, will be able to very easily identify and find the store." I think, I've heard that before. Everybody knows where Dollar Tree store is. We have a longer letter from Mary Murphy. Ms. Murphy here? "July 11th, to whom it may concern, I'm ready to voice my displeasure with the proposal of Anchor Sign Inc. for the signage of 56 Main Street. In my opinion, its size far exceeds any others in the general vicinity, and your approval will set a negative precedent for all the other nearby businesses that will now feel obligated to increase the size of their own signs in an effort to compete for customers' attention. Past-approved sign, past-approved zoning variances have shown that this does and will occur. Note all the new illuminated signage for Seasons Gas, all the way to Savas Plaza. Not to mention the town's seeming inability to police existing businesses of excess signage. 54 Main Street comes immediately to mind with the multiple plywood painted signs for each tenant planted in the grass, right next to the illuminated directory sign at the plaza entrance." Section 665, 66651, 6653, and 6654 clearly state, "First, temporary exterior signs or mobile sign displays are permitted to advertise the opening of a business at a new location or to advertise a special event as intended location." She says, "The signs I'm mentioning just repeat the tenant's name, no special sale or event. Furthermore, there is already a space on the illuminated sign for sales and special events." She quotes 6653, which says, "No two or more such signs shall be closer than 500 feet apart." And then she adds, "There are currently three such signs, all within 30 feet of each other, plus a sign advertising for help, with a fourth sign another 50 feet away, and yet a fifth approximately 100 feet away. Aside from the hiring sign, quote-unquote hiring, sign, the additional painted signs just display the tenant's name." According to Peter Panatieri-- 6633, she quotes, "The bylaw sign shall be limited and numbered to two signs for each business." I don't see anything here that's directly relevant to the petition at hand. I see that she's angry about signs in general. I understand that, and I think there's a place for that. But I'm not sure the place is here with this hearing. "As you can see, the town does not seem to enforce consistently or regularly its own bylaws. I hold no hope that if the town continues to approve exemptions to its zoning bylaws, prior applicants will try to compete by enlarging their own signs, creating the dreaded Route 44 circus of signs. I also have no hope ever of ever seeing any more celestial events without driving the other side of town for darkness. I seem to recall a certain Miss Nancy Gates and/or Martha Schroeder advocating for a dark sky bylaw several years ago. I agree with that, and I think she's right. And most, if not all, town officials seemed amenable to it at the meetings I attended. I feel that the tenants of 56 Main Street should abide by our zoning bylaws, as is. You would have to be an idiot," her words, "not to know what the store will be once it is open for business, complete with a maximum 32-square-foot sign, as prescribed in 6652. Such signs should not exceed 32 square feet. In closing, I have one further item in regard to this project. I attended a planning board meeting maybe a year ago, when the owners made one of their first presentations of the floor pan and exterior elevations. It was requested by one of the members to alter the aesthetics of the elevation by changing the squared-off parapet to-- I don't know what that has to do with the Dollar Tree sign request. I agree, I sympathize with Ms. Murphy's memo. I wouldn't state it quite as strongly, but I sympathize, and I think the things that she has stated here have come out, have already come out.
Why don't we take the memo referred to a building inspector? His follow-up on that, her request?
I actually need to send her an email, I told her that.
Yes, Kathy, shall I read your memo aloud? Kathy, "Our secretary responded to Ms. Murphy's email. I'm ready to inform you, the zoning board is in receipt of your email. According to its response, it's July 11. It will be placed on the record, and your opposition to the proposed sign will be duly noted. During the hearing, I would also like to respond to some of the points that were raised in your emails. Some of the businesses on Main Street have gone before the zoning board appeals and received a special permit for either a larger sign or to be permitted to increase the amount of signs that are allowed. The most recent of these special permits was issued to CBS and Seasons, respectively. Special permits have also been issued to some of the plazas along Main Street for the size of their directory sign. If you'd like additional information regarding the decision of these establishments and what their special permit allows, you can request this information from the zoning board of appeals. In regard to some of the sign violations you also pointed out in your memo, you would need to file a complaint with the building commissioner. He will respond to your complaint, determine if there's a violation, and then take appropriate action if it is warranted," which I think is appropriate and well said, thank you. Because not everything that she is talking about here relates to the Dollar Trees, the specific issues of the Dollar Tree petition. But in general, she does say, "We need to be thoughtful and careful of what the signs look like in Lakeville, so we don't start looking like Route 44."
I'm very familiar with Route 44. That's why we came up with the second option.
Your business is Route 44, right?
We do a lot there, yeah. But yeah, when they first showed us the first option, again, the designers in California, and especially Dollar Tree, they want as much as they can get, especially if the sign's already made. I'm from Rainy, I'm not here, but I do understand you don't want these giant signs, especially since I drive by Route 44 a lot. I understand that, and I understand that it is near a residential, and you don't want a huge sign that lights up across the street, which is why we came with those second options. I completely understand where she's coming from.
Who here would like to comment publicly on this request for the Dollar Tree sign? Took three seconds, then all the hands went up. I think you were first by a tenth of a second.
Oh, okay. My name's Carrie. Oh, come up.
Come up, speak into the mic.
My name's Carrie Polylogos, and we have a business on Main Street in Lakeville. And I just, I grew up in Lakeville. It's fine, I'm fine with change and everything as well. However, I don't think we need a huge Dollar Tree sign. Everybody in basically Lakeville, we know Dollar Tree is coming, and that's fine. But I don't think we need a huge sign, a tall, tall sign, you know, Mr. Panatieri's, that looks nice, but he has like so many businesses in that area, so I understand the big, big sign. And it's a nice sign. But it's only going to be Dollar Tree and one other retail or eatery, like a fast food thing. So, I think, in my opinion, we don't need a huge Dollar Tree sign. Just stick with the laws, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Pat Rand. I live on One Laurie Lane. My property, my backyard butts baldies. And during all his construction and his signs and everything, everything was done very nicely. You know, he worked with the town, and it's very aesthetic to the way we want, I think we all want the town to look like. Dollar Tree is more of a commercial organization, retail, you know, everyone knows Dollar Tree kind of thing. So, I just, I just don't want you to, you know, allow for a big sign and take away the quaintness of the town. It's, I don't, I'm not opposed to commercial development. I just think you can do it tastefully. And I guess, I humbly want to suggest that two wrongs don't make a right. You know, allowing Seasons to have a big sign, and, you know, some of these other signs that are oversized, you know, have special permission to have. If you keep on doing that, eventually, you're going to be allowing signs for what they're asking for, for the next one. And also, it's just not fair to the businesses that have been in Lakeville for years for their signs to look lousy compared to, you know, these big neon signs or whatever. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen Golub. I'm a resident at 92 Main Street--
I'm a resident at 92 Main Street, so just down the street from this. I'd also respectfully request that we find some compromise or go within the zoning bylaws. I drive past this area every day to and from work. I appreciate that we have a commercial space there. But the smaller wooden signs and things of that nature that we have in that vicinity are kind of in line with our character. As was already mentioned, the Walgreens sign is relatively small. I go to Walgreens all the time, I know exactly where it is. So I would just respectfully request that we kind of keep in line with that character of the area, especially, it's about three blocks from my house. I'm expecting a little one, and I think I'd like to keep that aesthetic up in that area. Thank you.
My name is Clay LePointe, and I live at 61 Main Street, so I'm a little bit closer. And I do appreciate all the businesses that are coming in, and it's an exciting thing to see. But since I got this notice as in a butter, I've been driving up and down the street, paying a little more attention. And I knew Walgreens sign was really small, but again, I go to Walgreens all the time, we know where it is. The 54 Main Street Plaza, they got the pool, the dentist, the tattoo parlor, you know, and that sign grew as more people came. And, you know, it's still, they're all smaller signs. I don't know if they're 32 square feet on the buildings, but I was looking at all the buildings. Building signs are small as well. I think they fit the bylaws. 62 Main Street, the signs are, you know, fit all the other businesses that are there. And the corner of Main and Clear Pond Road, someone bought that and fixed it all up, and they got a nice sign out there. And I know at one time, the signs were all wooden with spotlights, and someone got permission to get a lit sign, and so I guess everybody came because now all the signs are lit up. But they're the right size, and the lumens don't seem to be as bright maybe as Route 44, I don't know. But, you know, now a franchise has come in, and they have their standards, and I don't know if the sign on the building is going to be lit or just the sign on the side of the road.
The sign will go to the turn, the letters will go up the places.
Okay. So now, you know, we're getting closer, and if we set that precedent, then we have other businesses coming in, you know, where the hospital is, and, you know, across the street, directly across the street from my house, and next door to my neighbor there. So if we give these special permissions even to 40 square feet, you know what I mean? I know what you said about Seasons, but that's down, and it's all business there. That's where the healthcare center is. So you're getting closer to the residents that live there, and I know we're all zoned business, maybe somebody's going to buy us out, but we've been there a long time, and we have no intention of going anywhere. So I'd really like you to give some consideration to sticking to the 32 square feet. You know, they're going to say 40 square feet isn't much bigger, so why don't we just stick with the bylaw? 32 square feet is, to me, plenty, and we want the Dollar Store. We like the Dollar Store idea, it's right across the street, we can walk to it. So, and that was the purpose, you know, we're supposed to be the gateway to Lakeville, and all the people on the train go by. It would be nice if we remained consistent. So thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Claudia.
Hello, Jesse Medford, 47 Highland Road. Citizens of Lakeville voted for these bylaws at a town meeting. I think we should stick by their wishes until the bylaws are changed whenever possible. I like what you said, Chairman Foster, in the beginning, when you said that Walgreens, CVS, et cetera, have met the bylaws. I don't see why we should be making any exception in this case. Like you said, Ms. LePointe, 40 feet, 32 feet, what's the difference? Let's just stick with what the bylaws says, in my opinion. Thank you.
Sean Stott of the Five River Bend, which is just around the corner from the New York Tree. I'm going to agree, I'm not going to say much more than what others have said. I feel that they're reason for the bylaws. As the representative said, it's because it's an issue of expense, not effectiveness of the sign. It's because they're stock signs that they can pull off the shelf and install, and for that reason, I feel that the job of a 32-foot sign or 32-square-foot sign would do the job effectively. And given the choice, I'd prefer that the street sign also not be internally lit, but externally lit, just like the Baldi's sign was or is, the new sign there. So I think, you know, again, I haven't lived here that long, I've been in Lakeville for about six or seven years. Part of the reasons I moved here is because of the quaintness of the town, and I like to help, I like to make sure we keep the character of the town.
Thank you. I will make a, point out one thing, this has come up a couple times about internally-lit signs versus the kind of signs we used to have where there'd be an external light shining on the sign, whether it was a ground-mounted light or a light that would overhang the sign and shine onto it. It also shines into the eyes of oncoming traffic. So there is a safety aspect to an internally-lit sign that we don't always think about. I think the externally-lit sign has a little bit of the old-time flavor and the old-time style and the country style versus the internally-lit sign, but an internally-lit sign, I think, is safer for traffic at night. Just my opinion.
Hi, my name's Ken Glidden, I live on West Bond Street. I've been a Lakeville resident my whole life. I enjoy the rural character of Lakeville and pretty much echo what previous people have said. The town spoke, we set up our bylaws to adhere to what the people want, and kind of appreciate if we would adhere to that. My whole business, I was in business for many, many years myself, so I'm not anti-business. I appreciate having the store come to town, but my biggest concern too is light pollution. I mean, our end of town is lit up like a Christmas tree at night. So anything we can do to try to keep that to a minimum? And you did mention having a timer on the light, which we greatly appreciate that, instead of it going 24/7, so. But I'm concerned about setting a precedent also, where we do have the other businesses that have adhered to the signage size. I don't think it's fair to them to change that, and it's all in keeping the rural character of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So a question for the petitioner. The pedestal sign is 84 inches wide, according to your plans, is 84 inches wide, which is a 42-inch overhang, and our bylaw permits a 24-inch. How would you think your client would react if we tried to maybe come to some compromise sign, size on that sign, rather than an 84-inch-wide sign, something that's a little more keeping with the neighborhood?
They probably won't be happy, but I'm willing to compromise, and I'm their representative. Again, the reason why we went with the 84, the graphic designers were just looking mainly at just the Dollar Tree lettering, which again was the seven inches. I can see if we can do a compromise where if we shrink that down, they could go closer to six inches, which again, six inches, once you're driving by, especially, like they said, everyone knows there's going to be a Dollar Tree, but when you go too small, you kind of almost don't see it. So I'm sure they're willing to compromise a smaller size, but once you start going below six inches or even closer to five inches, they might recognize the logo, but the lettering really doesn't do much.
I'd bet you a cold beer, nobody is going to miss the Dollar Tree store if the sign is an inch smaller.
If we did the 24 inches, like your bylaws, the letters were much, much smaller than six inches. It looked very small, which is why they went for a bigger size. And as they did on the wall sign, they went for as big as they think they could get, but I think a compromise would work perfectly fine. I don't think they would be happy if we had to go within that 24 inches because of how small that sign would look, especially when the new business would go in there as well. But I understand why you would want to compromise on the 84 inches.
I don't know, I would, as a starting point, I would say, why don't we split the difference with them? So instead of an 84-inch-wide sign, our bylaws would like to have a 48-inch-wide sign, wide sign, and maybe we would go halfway.
Okay.
What do zoning board members think about?
I think they'll think it's a compromise. It's around five feet or so, five and a half feet.
Yeah, I think five, five and a quarter, something like that.
Would be 66-inch wide, instead of 84, it'd be 66.
Absolutely.
Are my numbers.
Yep.
I don't know if I'm getting it as small as townfolk would like, but we have to start somewhere.
It's on the pedestal. That's the pedestal sign.
The pedestal sign, right.
I think they would be fine with that. I also, just hearing everybody talk, I think what would scare me if I was on a butter reading 105 square feet when the bylaw says 32. I think if we originally started with the 40 square feet, there wouldn't be as much of a scare. And as a sign person, I know that 32 square feet might not seem too far off from the 40, but it does make a little bit of a difference. I build them all day, so I know the big, I mean, even just eight square feet.
Well, I think 40 square, do you have the, in your head, do you have the dimensions of the 40-square-foot sign?
I would not have those, I have those right on.
Dimensions on that? This, this one right here?
No, you want this one?
I would be that one, yeah.
You want these?
The 40.
I'm not sure which one is the 40, but there you go.
This is smaller. So we have one set of dimensions. On the sign that you represented as 40 square feet, the length from the one side of the D to one side of the E, the overall length of the sign is about 17 and a half feet. On the 60, it's 21 and a half feet, and on the original that you wanted, it's 32 feet and one inch.
Yeah, the big one.
So we've cut the size of that sign down literally by 50%, by half, approximately 50%. We've gone from a 32-foot-long sign, 32-foot-long sign to a 17 and a half-foot-long sign, 32 one inch to 17 seven, according to your drawings.
Yes, those are all exact.
That's a significant reduction in sign size, plus there's no logo.
Yes, no logo.
And that, I think that'd be a win for everybody.
And I do, I drive by here a lot, and I see the Seasons, and I think they did ask for more square footage, and I know Dollar Tree does not need to compete with them or any company really around it. I think Walgreens, I'm not familiar if they did get approval from you. I don't know if they were 32, yeah, so they were a little bit more above the 32.
Walgreens was quite a while ago, it's not a recent one. That was just.
That was a long time ago, but they came to us for signs, and we were pretty stubborn with them.
Yep, so although the bylaw says 32 square feet, we would still like to ask for the 40, just to give it a little bit more square footage on that large facade, and I think a great comparison would be the Walgreens.
The one thing I wish we have, and I don't think we have, is a dimension, you had a 32-square-foot.
Yes.
Does that have a length on it? Did you have a dimension on that?
For the 32?
For the 32.
I believe it's up there. Yeah, that one, those plans would be up there, my, no, it's not that one. Those ones, I think the overall was like 29 square feet. That was just above, I mean, below the bylaws.
You're showing one here that says, up here, it says 29.72 square feet.
Yeah, that was the one that we showed you, that if we didn't come before you and we just went with what the bylaws would be, that one's just to show that it does, that's why we're asking for the 40 square feet, although it's not much of a difference in square footage, it shows a little bit.
Then I misquoted the numbers because I was looking at this small one, the 17-foot, thinking that was the 40. It's not, it's the 30-square-foot. 42-square-foot is 21 feet long versus 32-square, 32 feet long. I misspoke, my fault.
There's lots of mistakes.
Well, I'm going to tell you, my, looking at these, my personal preference, and I don't speak for the board, is that we stick with what the bylaw requires because the difference between these two is so trivial in my judgment, but I'm only one of four people here.
I'd be willing to go with them. I mean, if that's what our board wants.
With the 32?
I would go with the bylaw, if that's what we wanted to. I don't think that the 40 is outrageous, but sure, I could accept the bylaw.
But you know, we heard some arguments from the neighborhood that I thought were pretty good arguments, and that is, I know that legally we do not set a precedent, but we also have to be respectful of other businesses that have abided by the bylaw, like Walgreens and CBS.
CBS, we give them special permits to do.
Do we give them extra, bigger sign?
Quite a few, I have that with me.
Can I make one point, just you mentioned earlier? If you allow them.
Can you come on up? No, 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 you can't, you can't until we're done with her and then you're invited.
Okay, he told me, I'm sorry, I apologize. He told me to go up, I.
You can come up when you're called up.
Okay, well, he told, yeah, he told me to go, I apologize, I'm sorry.
A point has come up over and over that I think I like, and that is, we should try to adhere to the bylaw as much as possible, but we should also try to do what's right for the business. Dollar Tree doesn't, I'm telling you, Dollar Tree doesn't need any help telling people where it is. It's, every GPS in eastern Massachusetts is going to point to Dollar Tree.
I think the, so the 32-square-feet, they showed you that option, and then the 40-square-feet was just to make it look a little bit more proportional to the wall or the facade that it's on.
Can I just make a point of reference? I think you should have a placate so that the people in the audience could see these. You know, I think it's very important that everybody here can see it and that people at home can see it.
Yeah.
So for your next presentation, I would have a placate that people can see it, just a, you know.
Chris Race is a good point, and I think for those of you who are interested, please feel free to come on up here, take a look at what we have.
Can we put those over here? Can we put the 32 and the 40?
Just so we know. So this is, let's see, this is what they would love to have. This is a 66-square-foot sign.
So here's the one that they were proposing, the big one, it's oversized, I think everybody's against that one.
This is the 40-square-foot, and this is what they think the.
But you can see the 32 and the 40 is not bad, and the 40 is proportioned to the parapet.
30, 40, 60.
So it's not bad.
100.
It's not bad.
I think the 40.
Yeah, I think it fits within that parapet and looks proportional, I think you're right. But, you know, I just wanted everybody to see it.
No, I understand you want to keep. I believe. And I understand all that. I don't like the way the town is really, to be honest.
Like someone said, the 40. I drive 44 Main to work there.
We have to.
And I read thinking that Main Street could turn into a 40.
I hate the way we're kind of.
More or less.
This is 40.
That's the 40.
That's the 32, so it's not that much different.
No, I get it.
Not much different at all.
And the bylaws require which one?
The 32. Unless we.
Yeah, but that's a small drawing. I mean, I try to like, put it in perspective by looking at the other ones a little bit.
If it's not that much different.
This is what they like.
Yeah, East End's bad.
Yeah, East End's bad.
Local East End sign.
All right, let's, 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 let's take our conversation back. You, you can. A gentleman in the back wanted to speak.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just wanted to touch on what you guys spoke about earlier. I live on County Street.
Thank you.
I don't even live on this side of town. I live on County Street in Lakeville. I live on the other side. My point was is I wanna stick for what you said earlier. Town set bylaws for a reason, because this is what's gonna happen. I've seen it happen my whole life. I lived in Mansfield before I moved here. Mansfield was like Lakeville. Now it's a mini-city. What happens is now you allow them to go bigger. Now what happens at the Lakeville Recreation Center across the street, they rip that down and they wanna put a, whatever they have, McDonald's, Burger King, whatever. They're gonna say, well, you allow Dollar Tree to go bigger, but we wanna go bigger. And you're gonna have to hold it to it because now you've broke the bylaw for them, that means you're gonna have to do it for somebody else. You know?
I, I agree with your point. Yeah, we, we, we can agree with your point. We've been over this with town council before. We do not set precedent. Just because we made a mistake before doesn't require that we make the mistake again.
And it's not, it's like it's a mistake. We're having a public hearing where we're allowing everybody to come down and speak on it. And if, and if everybody feels it's a good idea, then we proceed. So it's, you know, again, we're not setting a presen, precedent. We're having a public meeting and everybody has a chance to speak.
Well, like you said earlier, and it's perfect. People, my wife is like, oh, Dollar Tree's coming and everybody, and then everybody's gonna know it's there. I don't care how big the sign is and how small it is.
They won't, they won't need a sign at all.
Yeah. They don't. And exactly right. Like when I moved here, we found Walgreens, I found Walgreens, no problem. You got everything nowadays. You don't even need signs. People Google stuff. It's not a difficult thing to find. Someone goes Dollar Tree, Lakeville, it's gonna bring you right there. So, and my thing is the people that live in the area, and I don't blame you either. I wouldn't want this big green neon sign in front of my house. So that's just my opinion, you know?
Thank you.
But, thank you.
They might have a parking issue.
They might have a parking issue, right? That's a different issue.
That's on me.
Don, would it be out of line to ask if everybody had a problem with the 40? I mean, how, show of hands, does anybody have a pro, did anybody feel good about the 40? Foot, show of hands, no? Or do you wanna stay with the 32? 32?
They don't feel good about the 32 either.
Okay.
Yes, we do. We do. 32 with the bylaw.
All right.
Again, I do wanna say the reason why we did do the 40 is, one, we wanna go in front of you guys, and two, it is, it's a large facade. I do variance meetings all the time, and sometimes they want just a little bit more, but if it doesn't, if there's no reason why we're asking for a little bit more, we get denied all the time, or at least I do. I don't know if it's just me, but because of the facade, that's why we're going a little bigger.
They, they can dress it in. They'll figure it out. They will.
That's why we're requesting the 40.
But the question before is also, I mean, there's, there's the question of the facade sign, there's the question of the pedestal sign. It sounds like we're pretty much focused towards staying with the, within the constraint of the bylaw for the facade sign. With regard to that, the height of that sign off the ground, I believe it will no longer exceed the 20 feet.
That's correct, yep. It's just the square footage. Once we go, I think even below those 60.
But I think, I think also, I'm pretty sure that we have a, let me, back here for a second. I'm looking at bylaw 6632. Signs shall be limited to a maximum height of 20 feet as measured from the crown of the road directly perpendicular to the sign. And that bylaw follows directly from 6631, which says no sign should be located closer to 10 feet from the street right of way or no closer than 30 feet from the side of the property line. I think that's, that the second one, this height restriction, I think, even though it doesn't say it, I think that that intended to apply to a freestanding pedestal sign, not a facade sign.
Okay.
So it's good that you're willing to go with the 32-square-foot because the, the, the second thing you were asking for, which was a waiver from the height restriction, therefore no longer applies, according to what you said.
For the 32-square feet?
For the 32-square-foot sign.
And the 40. The 40-square-foot one is also, it's 19 feet, 4 inches. So it would be below that.
I think stick with the 32. That, that, um, if everybody is, I'm not gonna say everybody's happy with it. Nobody is unhappy with it. People will be unhappy with the 40. And I like what Chris said about, if we, and the gentleman in the back said, if we stick with what the bylaw says, then we don't have to have this battle next year when someone wants to develop the property across the street. Because we'll have sign size creep. We'll, everyone will be trying to creep a few percent bigger than the last big sign, and pretty soon we have enormous signs.
I'll let them know, the bigger they go, the less customers they will get, so.
Well, I wouldn't say that, really. So then.
I understand, and, um, I mean, we're making the sign either way, so I can, I get where you guys come from, and even, like I say, I do these meetings all the time, so I can understand. I don't see.
And you know, at a later date, five years from now, they can always come back to the zoning board and ask for relief from that sign restriction and put up a new sign.
If the bylaws change, they'll, I know they change all the time, but.
So we're faced with the question of the pedestal sign and the size of the pedestal sign, which was 84 inches wide, was that it?
Yes. We requested 84 and bylaws are 48.
The bylaw says 48 inches. 24-inch overhang, I think is the wording. I think that was the. Horizontally no more than two feet. And you basically want, um, three and a half feet.
Mm-hmm.
I'd recommend that we split the difference with you on that, so we get it's a smaller sign, even though it's bigger than the bylaw.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what we're recommending.
We're looking at this, this here. This is a, an 84-inch-wide sign, which is 48 inches on either side of the pedestal. And our bylaw says you can't have more than 24 inches.
We're, we're gonna allow that or not?
I'm suggesting that we split the difference. We give them.
Oh, split the difference.
Half of, half of the increase that they want.
That's fine.
Comments on that from the public? Hearing nothing.
Bylaws are bylaws. If we vote against it, we're not using. I, I don't see why we have to.
We, we, we have, um, in the past, we've given a little more flexibility on the signs in front of stores. Take, take a look at Panetary Plaza, for example.
There's no precedent.
What, what's that?
There's no precedent. It's a variance, so there's no precedent.
We don't set precedents.
No, right.
The court does.
Right.
I understand why we're talking about the past, if we don't set precedents.
We, we've allowed a little more flexibility because that really is a sign that people, that, people going down the road looking for a store will see the sign that's facing them as they come down the street rather than the one that they see after they've gone by. So we.
Yeah, cause there's so many in there, you could never see each individual on the building.
And so, and so we're looking, we're looking at a sign, we're looking at a sign in, in front of the store that would be about five and a half feet wide.
There's nobody in there and everybody knows it's going to be the Dollar Tree. They could look without the sign on the road and everybody is still gonna know that's Dollar Tree.
I, I do, I do agree with that. Every GPS will know where it is. I know that. I'm the only one without a GPS.
But there is gonna be a second business in that.
There will be a second business. Good point. And the other good thing about this sign compared to others is this, this sign stands well above the, um, the view perspective of drivers coming and going, so it won't, compared to some other signs we have, this will impose no safety hazard, no obstruction, cause it's up fairly high.
How high is it compared to the, the big tall sign? A lot smaller?
No.
It's gonna be nice, like really tall.
This, in, in terms of height, this meets the bylaw. The only thing they're asking for here is the width. They want an 84-inch-wide sign. Our bylaw permits 48. And I'm, I suggested we, we meet them halfway, which would be five and a half feet. 66 and 20.
Is that bigger than Walgreens short?
Those signs are treated differently. The little, the little signs that you see at Walgreens that say entrance and exit and drive up and ATM and so forth, those are handled separately in the bylaw.
Come on with the grass, right after the, the grass thing.
Yeah, on the corner.
On the corner, there's a Walgreens sign there.
Yeah. Don't know.
Similar in that size, cause that size blends in.
I don't know what size that is.
It looks nice. Baldi's looks nice. It's not too big, it's not too small. Look at the town.
Zero deviation would be the best.
That's what they're proposing. It's a very basic sign. It's 20 feet high. It says Dollar Tree. The letters are six inches high?
Uh, this one would be seven, but with the, um, the new plans, it would probably be about six inches.
Yeah, six inch highs, letters.
Yeah.
Why does it have to be, uh, what you're proposing, three and a half feet versus two feet? The letters don't fit. I'm just wondering why we're going to give them that variance to increase the width of the sign from the support? Is it just to be nice or is there a reason that the, the letters won't fit in one chair?
Um, so when we shrink down to the size, which is 24 inches from the support, which is an overall 48 inches, uh, when we shrink that down with the Dollar Tree, the letters get really, really small, uh, which is why they were requesting the 84 inches, cause that way the letters would be about seven inches.
You want the sign updated, please?
I don't think, um.
Can you have a pedestal sign?
There is an Eastern Bank sign across.
So it says Dollar Tree, then your letters could be larger.
Um, I know, um, cause I do designs too. Since there's gonna be another company there, they like to do one line per company. So although everyone knows it's Dollar Tree and it's the green and the white, they like to keep it one simple line. So one line per company, um, that's in there. Just so it doesn't look double stacked and then you have four lines for the two companies.
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll tell you that, um, customers aren't, aren't gonna see the words Dollar Tree. They're gonna see green. And that's, that's what they're, they're gonna pull when they see the green sign. People really are very attuned to color. The first time they'll look for Dollar Tree, and then they're just gonna see the green sign.
I'm colorblind, so. I'm a person.
So you'll see the brown sign.
Uh, blues, greens, and purples are my, I can't see them really, so. For people like me.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to move ahead with this, with this hearing tonight. I think we've beat this up. We're agreed on a 32-square-foot facade sign. I believe the request for the, um, the height, the waiver on the height requirement goes away because of the size of the letters that you've agreed to. And so that eliminates, essentially eliminates the first request you had in your petition. So this, this leaves only the pedestal sign. You're asking for a, an 84-inch-wide and, um, I think we can go to a 66-inch-wide, which would be split halfway between the bylaw and what you're asking for.
Okay, there will.
And I'm gonna ask the board if we agree and make sure that there's no more public comment. We can move ahead with that.
I agree.
Okay. Can we have a motion then? To approve the request for a 66-inch-wide sign.
I don't, I don't make good motions to Christian. Go ahead, Chris.
I'll make a motion to deny the, um, the variant, the request for the large facade sign and to accept the compromise put forth by the chairman for a 66-inch-wide pedestal sign.
Do you wanna add a restriction about hours of lighting of the signs?
Yeah, what's the bylaw say about that?
I think if we just say the signs will be lighted during business hours.
I can say, I can let them know. I'll check the business hours and then I can compare them to yours if the business hours, they should be within your bylaws.
Not, not to go past, what, 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM?
What are your hours? You don't know, you don't work.
I don't work there.
I, I think it's reasonable that the, that the sign be lighted during business hours.
That's fine. I'll add that to the, to the motion.
Okay, motion's been made with restriction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe has seconded the motion. Any further discussion from the board?
No.
Any further discussion from the public, even though I'm not supposed to ask? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. So I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Just, just to review, you have approval for a sign that's 60, 66 inches wide and denied the, the request for this large facade sign. We, um, have two weeks to prepare our paperwork and then there's a, you know that.
The appeal period and then.
Appeal period.
Register D.
And it will be mailed, it will be mailed to the applicant, is that right?
I was just gonna ask that. Do you want that mailed to you?
I would rather it mailed to me, cause, um.
Can you give me that?
I just found out about this to me like three hours ago, but obvious.
Yeah, I usually have that, it's a quarantine sign. I'm finding such a, I'm usually there.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, yeah, they called me. I'm like, here, show them.
Do you have, do you have a business card?
I do have, or if you want, I can go grab that.
Yes, please.
Someone asked me, talk about how I like being, was this leading to them?
Do you want copies of all this? Do you want copies of this? Just in case it's an appeal. I don't know, but, 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 um, realistically, they don't wanna spend any more money than they have to.
See, it's, it's, it's not a precedent. It's, it's a variance from the bylaw, so that's, we're just granting that. Doesn't set a precedent for somebody else to come in. They still have to come in and get a variance and still it's a big public hearing. So people.
Yeah, every, every petition.
Yeah, no, it's not so, but my, my curiosity was is like, um, cause I'm kinda, I'm kinda just getting to all this, trying to understand this, trying to think how things work. I appreciate you guys, we do kind of do a couple of people, which is great. But, so, somebody else comes in also.
Let's pause for five minutes.
But within 300 feet, public posting at the town hall.
Work our way through this last, reconvene and work our way through this last item on our agenda, which is to look at the proposed new zoning bylaw for marijuana use. And it's, I have to tell you, it's unclear to me why we're being asked to look at this unless they intend to ask us to speak at town meeting, as they sometimes do. There are three parts of this stuff that they gave us. The first is the, um, definitions. The second is the new zoning bylaw. And the third is the checklist.
Don, can I clarify this?
Oh, Kathy's gonna help us.
Yeah. All right, this isn't proposed. This is a done deal. This is.
Okay, even better, so.
SB GA has been changed from the planning board to the zoning board, so.
So we, so we own it?
You guys own it, yep.
Okay. So we have new definitions to look at, and Kathy has highlighted the relevant parts of the definition, which is, which includes adult-use marijuana retailer. of the definition, which is, which includes adult-use marijuana retailer, adult-use marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivator, craft marijuana cropper, a marijuana product manufacturer, independent testing lab, marijuana research facility, and marijuana transporter, or any other type of licensed marijuana in the business. And then finally, on the third page here, registered marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana treatment center is defined in 105 CMR, et cetera, that's state law.
Kathy, could I ask you, who wrote these definitions? Where did we get them from?
Uh, all right, from the bylaws.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the second thing we have, the second pa, uh, package, the packet that Kathy gave us, is the bylaw itself, it's three pages long. And it includes stuff that was struck out, as well as new additions that weren't inserted.
Right.
And I confess that I didn't look at that before today. So this is, this is new to me. This is something that we need to be familiar with. I wish our other members were here, this, but we need to be familiar with this when we grapple with the next applicant.
Is that next month?
No.
I don't think so.
But I have sent out a checklist to someone, so I would say that it's probably coming.
Okay. I, I'd like to discuss this, but the whole, I mean, these just look like, uh, clerical kind of things, we're just cleaning it up a little bit?
Well, just kind of for your information, so you can kind of be prepared.
This is, this is a, this is training for us. I mean, we haven't had to face this yet. We faced some, some of it.
Well, we haven't done the recreational, right?
And fortunately, fortunately, we've always had town council, we, and we will continue to have town council with us when we do this. I think the third part that Kathy gave us is perhaps the most useful to us, this is a checklist that we have to go through. So these are, this third one with all the little boxes on the left, um, this really is the roadmap that we use as we go through the discussion, to, to assure ourselves that the applicant has completed all the required steps and, uh, done the necessary work to comply with the bylaw. I think it's comply with state law and comply with the bylaw.
So, this is just information, we're not bold about anything really.
So, actually, this is what the planning board was using, but, I mean, there's some obviously basic changes, but then some questions that I did have, because they were charging 1,240, 240 was the permit fee, and $1,000 was for site plan. So I think we spoke about it, Don, the site plan in the bylaws crossed out, but not specifically said who's gonna do that. And that's something, would you want a sign off from the planning board? Is the zoning board gonna do that?
You know-
I think you had said it wasn't clear.
We, we don't do site plan review.
So it's struck from this?
I think that the-
Was that assumed that the zoning board was gonna, then gonna do it?
I think that the planning board should still do the site plan review.
On the, um, on the other, the, the, um, medical, on the medical, um, do they do the site plan?
They did, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
I mean, there are special considerations regarding the plan of the site, special considerations for business like this, like waste treatment, and what you do with the sewage and the residue and-
Yeah, I know.
Control of smell, and control of flies and bugs and insects and rodents and critters, including the critters that sneak in at night trying to get some free stuff. I mean, there's security things, for example, that's all part of-
No, I think they're very equipped to do the site plan, um, but I, I was trying to remember if the, if our board had done it, the site plan for the medical. We did?
You did, the planning board, yes.
I think, my take on answering that question is that because this, in the, in the recent past, there's been so much confusion over the whole thing, that we stumbled into talking about that.
Okay, yeah.
But, the both boards stumbled into talking about those kinds of things, because there's no clarity on precisely who does what. There's no clarity on precisely what needs to be done.
This came up on, on both of our boards, um, very, uh, marijuana issue came up quickly, and-
Right.
Yeah, we scrambled on a lot of it, so.
Is there a more term on, for six months, on any new facilities coming in, or is, um-
On any new host agreements.
Host agreements.
But anything that is out there-
Okay.
Is active.
So we might have one of the three come back for retail? Okay.
Well, actually, I think there's like six host agreements up.
There's six host agreements up, yeah, so.
But only three, um, currently under construction, or are they, are they up and going?
You know, these things are gonna be like casinos, in no time at all, there's gonna be so many, nobody's making money.
Yep, they're gonna go out of business. I see.
Kathy, what else do we have to talk about on this?
I don't know, what do you wanna do with this?
What are we supposed to do with this?
Well, I don't know what. I'd like to try to get a draft, so if someone does come in, I could give them something. So if you wanna just look at it and think about that-
No, I get it.
If you want a planning board sign off, and then that fee would be adjusted.
What's the $122.76?
That's the legal ad.
That's what it costs?
Yes.
That's, so that's for two weeks' worth of ads?
Yep.
I think we know everyone then, but, yeah.
Yeah, I do think we know everyone, but I, I'm just thought that, um-
So the question that we have before us is the amount, the, the 1,240.
Right, which would be impacted by if you do want that planning board signing off for the site plan.
Yeah, they should do the site plan. Planning board should still do the site plan.
Yeah. I, I think I agree with that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're, they're experienced and knowledgeable about that.
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll get a checklist from them. And, um, do we wanna add, um, letters from, uh, department heads, like police and fire and-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, police and fire.
Um-
And when appropriate, well, we would, for, for, for any hearing, we'd, we'd expect things from police, fire, CONCOM, whatever.
Yeah, letters. Yeah, but not always from police and fire, but I think on this one, we would.
We, we ask for police and fire on things where we think there's an impact, like a 40B, for example.
Right.
Where there's, there's turning circles, and you have to have a certain radius, and you need to get-
Yeah, and then everything else, site plan review will pick up on the planning board, so traffic studies, drainage, percentage of lot covered, stuff like that, parking, let them do that, and then we can come back and see if this meets the bylaws.
When's the next planning board meeting? Do you know? You're not in the planning board.
I'm not on anymore.
Well, do you-
Thursday.
Kathy is, Kathy's our connection.
A week from today? A week from today. Maybe I should go and ask them, will they continue to do site plan review? Or, can you ask them?
Do you want me to put you on the agenda?
I don't know what I have, what's on, already on my calendar for Thursday night.
I think they'd be happy to do it, I, I, just my opinion, I would think they would want to-
Well, like I said, I think we had talked about it, where it's, it's crossed off, but it's not-
What are we looking at, definitions?
This is where the site plan was.
Yeah.
It's a site plan by planning board, it's crossed off, but it doesn't say site plan by zoning board.
Okay. It just says special permit by zoning board.
Right.
So that's, so this is, this is sort of undefined then.
Right.
This is unclear. So the thing that we need clarity on then is, will the planning board continue to do a site plan review? I think maybe we should say it more strongly, that-
So I feel like if you put that on the checklist, then you're gonna say that.
Well, we need to get the planning board to first agree that, yes, it will remain as, um, their responsibility, and then it goes on the checklist, if they say yes. If not, then we have to negotiate that somehow.
Do you feel they'd be willing to take, keep-
And what was the, um-
Yeah, I'm under the impression that they're still doing that. Good. I believe.
Kathy, the 1,240 was 1,000 plus 240?
Yep.
The 240 was the application fee?
Yes.
And what's the 1,000 for?
Is the site plan.
Oh.
So when the planning board was doing it, it was that one fee.
Okay. So there was $1,000 to the planning board for site plan review, and then 240 to us for?
No, well, they were doing the special permit for the recreational marijuana.
Yeah, we took it, we took it away from them.
No, they was forced upon us.
Yes, it was. It was forced upon us, yes.
Careful.
But I think that the logic made sense, that one board handle, um, you know, the special permit, permit. Planning board hasn't done, in the past, any special permits, so they're not really familiar with that process.
I, yeah, I, I, I don't want to do this, but I agree with that.
Yes, yeah.
And for the, it, you see, precisely the same logic, I think that they, because the planning board is skilled in a site plan review and knows what goes into it-
Exactly.
I think that they should continue to do, perform that function for the town.
Yeah, exactly.
What, does that mean that the planning board would still get the $1,000?
If they review the site plan.
I mean, we, it's not like we get it, it goes right into the town.
Exactly, so it doesn't matter.
Right.
Yeah.
They have a very-
Okay, do we answer your questions?
Uh, you can let me know if you wanna be on the agenda. I'll probably not post till Monday, so.
Um, let me check my calendar when I get home, and I'll, you can bug me.
Okay.
'Cause I'll forget. Do we have any other business tonight? Ms. Secretary? Meeting is adjourned.